You're available at 1:00 on Friday. There will be an announcement by the Governor on a project that we cannot talk about at this time, but if you could make a note of 1:00 on Friday to be available, I suggest you should do it.
All right, we'll get started with the City Council briefing, the Hampton Roads Crossing Study.
Yes, sir. Just happy to have the VDOT team back in. Jim Utterback, of course, in the back, and Tony's here, and Kevin from HRTAC is here on my left to join us. But today, we're lucky to have our -- the Division Chief, Division Director of the Environmental Division, Angel Deam. So what we're talking about is the Hampton Roads Crossing Study and the SEIS. It's been worked, and they've made several briefings throughout the region with all the city managers and county administrators. They've done it for the PDC and asked them to come in and share their study with you all so that you understand the magnitude of the discussion and decisions ahead. So, Angel, thanks for being here.
This is a huge, huge thing. We welcome you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present on the status of the Crossing Study. It is a significant study, by far the most significant that the Division is involved with currently. I'm standing in today for our project manager, Mr. Scott Smizik, who I'm sure you've seen at briefings. Hopefully, I'll do him justice. So the purpose of today's briefing is to provide you an update on the status of the study, to summarize some of the findings, or just sort of orient you to how the findings are presented in a document of this magnitude, and also to review the ongoing public involvement opportunities with this study. So first, before we jump into the current status, I wanted to hit on a little bit of the history of this study, and I realize many of you may be well aware, more aware than I am, of some of the history of this study, but it does provide a good context for where we are today. So back in the early '90s, federal funding was identified to study congestion at the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. That culminated in a planning study that was produced in 1997. That was a catalyst to initiate a required NEPA study, and that stands for National Environmental Policy Act. So anytime you're going to use federal funding, you have to complete an appropriate level of NEPA document. So that ensued, and in 1999, a draft NEPA document was produced. And then in 2001, a final document was produced that identified a preferred alternative that I'm sure some of you are familiar with. That study was reevaluated a couple of times. It did not progress to implementation. There was also a study of just the 13-mile HRBT corridor that produced a draft document in 2012. That, too, did not advance any further, so it's with that context that the Federal Highway Administration made the decision that the original document needed to be supplemented, and supplemented in a way that would reconsider alternatives and essentially redo a lot of the analysis that was done initially. So in July of last year, July of 2015, we officially kicked off this supplemental environmental impact statement study. And I do apologize in advance for the acronyms that we use in the environmental arena. I'll try to not use them as much here today, but feel free to interrupt if I do. So following that June announcement that we were kicking off the supplemental, we held citizen information meetings in July to scope the study and get the feedback we needed to get going. And then for the last year, we've been updating the needs, the purpose and need, as we call it. We've been identifying the alternatives that needed to be revisited, or new alternatives to be studied. And that all culminated recently in the August 5 publication of the draft supplemental document. That notice of availability kicks off a prescribed 45-day comment period, so that's the timeframe from August 5 to September 19, and that's when the document is open for public inspection and comment. And so these briefings are to help ensure that the public is well-informed and that we receive a vast amount of input from jurisdictions, from the public, and from other stakeholders. During that 45-day period, we'll also hold location public hearings, and those have been scheduled for the 7th and 8th of September. Then looking ahead to later this year, in October, we will formally brief the Commonwealth Transportation Board. That will allow them to have the benefit of the result of all the public comment that was received during that timeframe. Okay. So as I mentioned earlier, this supplemental does include the reconsideration of alternatives. So rather than taking that approved alternative that was identified in 2001 and just pushing it forward, we reconsidered alternatives. We did start with the alternatives that were studied previously, to examine them, to determine if they were still viable, to determine if they needed to be modified, and to determine if new alternatives were necessary. The SEIS does discuss the ability of each of the alternatives to meet the purpose and need for the study. I won't get into that today for time's sake, but there is summaries of that in the document. As we review the alternatives, you'll notice that they're colored. All of the alternatives have different colored segments. That was intentional and was not something that was done in the original EIS. It's a strategy that we're employing to try to ensure that this study results in a project moving forward to implementation. So identifying operationally independent sections of alternatives allows us to look at the cost and the impacts of sections of a complete alternative. It also allows us to advance those operationally independent sections independently, as it would imply. So I just wanted to set the stage for that, and it'll make more sense as we move forward. We are studying four-build alternatives, as well as the no-build in the draft document. So you can see the coloring with this first alternative, Alternative A. You see, there's two segments that comprise Alternative A. So this alternative, should it be identified as the preferred, can be implemented in total, or it can be implemented into pieces. And then you'll see how that continues as we go through the other build alternatives. So Alternative A is confined to the I-64 corridor from 664 on the peninsula to 564 on the south side. As I mentioned, this was studied as a standalone environmental impact statement around 2012. That study looked at a Build 8 improvement in this quarter and a Build 10 improvement in this quarter. Public comment, as well as other stakeholder comment, resulted in those improvements not considered to be viable because of the impacts that resulted from expanding this facility to eight or 10 lanes. So that's why it's important that this study is informed by all those previous efforts. So because of that, when the Federal Highway Administration and VDOT kicked off this study, we made the determination that any improvements along this corridor would be confined to the existing right-of-way, or largely to the existing right-of-way. What that means is that Alternative A is a consistent six-lane alternative from end to end. So on the Hampton side, it's pretty much as-is. Over the water, it's an additional lane in each direction, and then in Norfolk, it expands it, one lane in each direction. The cost, and I'll revisit this again at the end, the cost of Alternative A is estimated at $3.3 billion. I'll also note here, during scoping around that June-July timeframe, an option was brought forward called the 3-4-3 option. What that means is that an additional lane in each direction would be added over water only. The 3-4-3 option is not part of Alternative A, per se, but it is studied in the document, and it is suggested that if it becomes part of the preferred, it could be studied further. But it could be added to any alternative that includes improvements on the 64 corridor. The document also discusses the increase in costs and impacts associated with adding that additional lane over water. Alternative B includes all the improvements under Alternative A, so that consistent six-lane facility that we just discussed. It then extends along 564 over the Elizabeth River with the new bridge tunnel to the east of Cranny Island, as you see there in blue. It then proposes a new four-lane section down the east of Cranny Island, and then continues on 164 proposing improvements there from four to six lanes. That, too, was a result of scoping comments received early on this study. Improvements to 164 were not part of the original study, but they've been added here. If I didn't mention, the 564 connectors, we call it the piece from existing 564 over to Cranny, is proposed of four lanes as well.
But basically, B is A with a little bit more, right?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Thank you very much.
The estimate...
A lot more.
The estimate for Alternative B is $6.6 billion.
How much?
$6.6 billion.
Exactly.
Also, wanted to pause here. I'm trying to not, you know, discuss everything under one alternative, but spread it out a little bit, and talk a bit about transit, so you don't see, specific to this alternative, transit improvements. However, the document does discuss in detail the fact that transit can be improved with any of these alternatives, and that can take place by transit vehicles such as buses working in a shared managed lane, for example. That would improve trip reliability, also provide the potential to improve the number of trips that the current MAC service provides in this area. And then I'd contrast that with Alternative C, which does have dedicated transit lanes. So Alternative C may look familiar. This is the original preferred alternative from 2001. Again, that designation has been set aside. It is not advantaged in any way in this study. It's on equal footing with all the other alternatives. It provides improvements along the entire length of 664. So you can see on the left side of the screen, that includes eight lanes on the peninsula side, plus two transit-only lanes. That continues till we get to what we're calling the 664 connector, which is the red piece that goes across the top of Cranny Island. So the transit-only lanes extend to the east there, as well as connecting to 564, what we call the 564 connector. So this is just like Alternative B in that case. It also incorporates what we call the 164 connector, or segment 13 in blue there. Continuing on 664, you can see the lanes transition to just eight lanes south of there, and then six lanes as it terminates at Bowers Hill. I would note here, with this alternative, and this again applies to any alternative that includes the 664 segment, you'll see that in red there. We have been coordinating closely throughout this study with the Army Corps of Engineers, specifically their operations section for this piece because of their interest in Cranny Island. The study does incorporate 100-foot vertical clearance across this 800-foot channel because the Corps has indicated they must maintain unconstrained access to the north face of Cranny Island. They have not concurred that that 100-foot vertical clearance, though, provides that unconstrained access, so just want everyone to be aware of that, and the document clearly discloses that. So there may be additional costs associated with providing that unconstrained access if it's found that it can be provided.
How much was that bad boy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Alternative C is $12.5 billion.
Billion?
Billion. All of the alternatives have a B.
Can you stop now?
No, we have one more.
Comes in granddaddy.
Next one is the national...
Everyone seems to have about double.
So it's going to be $25 billion?
Actually, Alternative C is the most expensive because of the additional infrastructure for the dedicated transit lanes. Those are separate facilities, so Alternative C is actually the most expensive. Alternative D is a new alternative. This was not in the original study, so this is essentially everything. So this includes improvements along every corridor that we're studying, much like Alternative C, although it does not include the dedicated transit lanes that we saw in C. But again, transit can be accommodated and certainly advantaged if it runs in a managed lane with other vehicles. Also, I'd point out with this alternative, and again, this is true for any alternative that includes the 164 connector, that's the blue segment east of Cranny Island, that we've used existing information coordinated with the Port Authority, the Coast Guard, and the Corps to determine what the needs are there in terms of access, security needs, and other elevation issues. Those entities have been clear that that's a good place to start, and so we do have some bridging included in the cost here. However, we may find that additional bridging and additional access may need to be accommodated along that stretch that could translate into increased cost. The cost of Alternative D is $11.9 billion. And again, you can see with this one, because it's the most extreme example, all the different colors constitute the segments, the engineering segments of these alternatives. Not all of those by themselves are operationally independent. What I, again, mean by that, as I mentioned at the beginning, is that identifying a piece or pieces that can function on their own without the rest of the alternative. So for example, the yellow segment labeled as 10 cannot function on its own. It has to be combined with either the blue, segment 13, or the red, segment 11, to be an operationally independent section. And the document gets into that, and it also, again, presents cost and impacts by segment as well. In terms of findings, the supplemental document and all of the supporting technical reports are available on the study website. They're broken up by content, which makes it a little bit easier for the reader to get to what they're interested in. You can certainly search through those documents. It's quite voluminous, but all of the technical reports, all of the appendices and technical memos are available there. The draft, if I didn't say this before, does not recommend a preferred alternative. It just presents the findings for the four build alternatives. So this is just a small example of a matrix that you would see in the document. There are many, many pages of these. We just grabbed a subset of the findings to give you a sense of how they're reported. Again, there's an appendix that reports them by segment, and these tables in the document itself, it rolls them up by alternative. You can see residential relocations there by alternative, you know, largely within the right-of-way. For some of these alternatives, have kept those numbers down. Once a preferred is identified, there'll be additional avoidance and minimization that will be explored that we expect to drive those numbers down, not just for relocations, but also for things like wetlands. So that additional bridging that I mentioned along 164, we believe, will result in some fairly sizable decreases to those wetland acreages. Regarding floodplains, many of these quarters, as I'm sure you all know, do encroach within flood zones. However, none of the build alternatives pose a flooding risk. None of the build alternatives will increase flood elevations or the probability of flooding, and that's because they have to be designed consistent with the federal executive order, FHWA policy, and VDOT criteria. So what you see listed here is just acreage within the quarter that we're studying, and that's true of a lot of the resources that we're required to report on, on a document of this magnitude. The costs that I went through with each alternative are also listed here for your reference. I emphasize the footnote that's shown there, that these are $20.16 and include a 40% contingency. In terms of ongoing public involvement, again, we're in the midst of a formal public comment period. We have been receiving feedback throughout the last year. That comment period runs through September 19. And here are some of the opportunities for the public and others to get engaged. The document, as I mentioned, is online. It's also available at seven different local libraries, and the list of those libraries are on the website. It's also available at the VDOT District Office in Suffolk. There's a comment forum online that we're trying to drive folks to. It makes it easy for them to provide their feedback on this study. But we also accept narrative comments through email or hardcop email. Here are the details on the location public hearings, September 7 in the city of Hampton, September 8 in the city of Norfolk, as well as the website and email address. At the public hearings, there's also a court reporter that'll be available if folks want to make verbal comments, if they prefer to do that. And then a milestone schedule looking ahead. Once we conclude the public comment period, as well as the location public hearings, we'll brief our board. We anticipate doing a pre-briefing with them in September because of the magnitude of the study, but the official briefing will be in October. That will give them a chance to receive all the public comment summarized for them, as well as feedback, whether they be resolutions or letters from stakeholders, including jurisdictions and regional entities, so they'll have the benefit of that information. And then we anticipate their formal action on a preferred alternative by the end of the year. Depending on the scope of the preferred alternative, so how much study needs to occur in the final document, you know, what the preferred entails, what the comments were on the draft that would require maybe some additional study. In the final, we're speculating spring to summer 2017 for producing the final. We'll certainly narrow that down at the end of the year, once we understand what the preferred is. And then assuming fiscal constraint is in place for the alternative, or the operationally independent sections of that preferred alternative, if the money is in place for that, then we can anticipate getting a decision, which is termed a record of decision, by as early as summer 2017. And why that's important is that allows NEPA to conclude, my folks get out of the way, and then the project can actually be designed right-of-way, can be negotiated and acquired, and construction can occur. And that concludes my...
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm delighted that we're at this point, and this is good information, and that means we're going to be doing something here in the near future. Any questions or comments? Mike, John?
Couple. In the Chapter 2, it talks about that sometime after 7, 19 September, that the Federal Highway Commission and VDOT will recommend the preferred alternative. But it goes on to say, the agencies believe... Do the agencies reference to someone other than the Federal Highway and VDOT, or the Federal Highway Administration and VDOT that will be making the recommendation of the alternative?
Typically, a staff recommendation is made, and that's in concert with the Federal Highway Administration, as a result of the comments that have been received. We hope to receive some feedback from the Corps of Engineers on what they consider to be an appropriate preferred alternative. We're unsure if we'll obtain that by the end of the year. That would be ideal, so I know the document makes reference to that as well. But regardless, we're looking forward to our CTB making a decision. They are the decision-maker on the preferred by the end of the year.
Army Corps of Engineers is the decision-maker?
No, the Commonwealth Transportation Board is the decision-maker.
And just so you know, so in Chapter 2, that's very unclear.
Okay.
It makes you believe that, never mentioned, the Commonwealth Transportation Board is the person making the decision on the preferred alternative.
Okay.
The other thing, I know that, I don't know if we're going to be making a recommendation on what we think the preferred alternative is, and this isn't about the report, but when you look in Chapter 2, they give you lots of good information about each of the alternatives, like reduced, no-build, minutes of travel, number of cars. So it really forces the people wanting to make a recommendation on a preferred alternative to come up with their own scoring mechanism as to what we value relative to those individual metrics. I'm just sharing that with council, because that is what we're going to want to look at, because really, that's a price, but how you rate these tells you what you value.
Right.
And that's the work that we're going to have to do and look at to do that. But I look forward to that. But it was a very good report. I loved reading it. I think you did a good job.
Thank you.
But there's a lot of homework for us to do.
Yeah. And I would say there was a lot of debate over that amongst the cooperating, participating agencies, but NEPA, NEPA is about informed decision-making. It's not about forcing a particular decision based on environmental impacts. So it's really up to the stakeholder to determine, just as you said, what they value and the cost-to-benefit ratio to determine what they would recommend.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? I would sit back and say to you, D ultimately would be the best. You know, I'm sure you determined that already. Yeah, but it gets down to money, and so I think we might be limited to not be able to do D. But Kevin Page is here. I just saw him. And Kevin, can you give us a timeframe? Let's say we came up with B or something along those lines, that type of dollar. When could something like that conceivably be under construction?
Kevin? Yes, okay, thank you.
Kevin's Executive Director of HRTAC.
Mayor, thank you, and Angel, great presentation. Thank you for enlightening us on that. To answer Mayor Sessom's question is that our Funding Strategies Advisory Committee is looking at all four of the alternatives. Obviously, A and B are the most fiscally constrained and within probably what could be our long-range funding plan that we've already started to endeavor at HRTAC. We feel if we can move forward with Friday's discussion at EFSCAC, we might be coming to you, sir, in your chairmanship position at HRTAC at the September 15 meeting with a plan of finance that will take us forward to potentially get as far as B, as in boy, within the constrained 2040 long-range transportation plan. So that's a planning horizon for constructability and completion by 2040.
Perfect world would be, when would that construction begin?
I could tell you when it will end. The beginning part is up to this lady and Mr. Utterback in the back, sir. But B could theoretically be complete all the way through. Now, that, B, of course, is HRBT and also the east-west 64-5-64 crossing. We will literally bump to 2040 on the completion of that, and we could see one of those projects, the first hurdle of those two projects completed by 2027.
2027.
2027.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, yes, John?
Because I think we can narrow some of these down. You are correct, Mr. Utterback, because you can't get a record of decision for something that's not fundable. That's clear in the regulations. Yes, so that will narrow down our choices, but I do think we need to look at probably A and B are probably the real choice that we can work at, and then say which of those we think is best.
Could I follow up with that good statement that you just made? Is because if we do choose an alternative that is overwhelmingly not fundable in a repetitive way, so we can continue the process, if we have a three- or four-year gap in the construction of those projects as we move forward in segments, we run the risk of losing that record of decision and repeating what we're doing right now with the supplemental document.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all y'all's presentations. Great. All righty, we'll now move on to our next one, which will be Connected Community Update. Matt?
Yes, sir.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
I just wanted to keep in this theme of connecting, and I guarantee you, Matt's numbers are going to be a whole lot less than the numbers you just heard, so...
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, City Manager Hanson. I'm here today to provide you an update on two projects that are currently ongoing that really align well with our connected community vision of 2040, as well as the mayor's State of the City address of the Year of Connectivity. When you take a look at this image that was created from his State of the City address, you know, being a technologist, it's really exciting to see there are a lot of things that technology can enable and play a role in. And connectivity to us is fiber optic communication. So I'm here today to provide you an update on the city project, ongoing project called the Next Generation Network, and provide you an update on the fiber communications hub with the recent announcements of the sub-oceanic, subsea cables. The Next Generation Network, so this is an ongoing project that's been in the works for almost two years now. This is going to connect 65 government sites with fiber optic communications. We went live in July with the foundational components of six sites, as you can see. The dotted line that you see on the north end will be connected once Lesnar Bridge is complete. We have conduit and fiber that will go across Lesnar Bridge. So as we connected these first foundational sites, these six sites, we did a lot of work. What you see here in this picture is actually fiber communications cable, fiber optics in the ground. And Darrell here is going to pass around a couple props. You have this fiber optic cable that goes into these conduit. And as you're looking at the cable, look at all the individual strands, and I'll show you a little bit more about that detail as we move forward. So we've ordered a lot of equipment. Equipment was delivered, asset tagged, configured, out in the heat, moving to the various site staff, load up on trucks, move it out to the sites, to where we actually light it up and, you know, it becomes connected. So when you think about this network, if our data center, where all of our servers and data and information reside, think of that as the heartbeat of government and technology. Well, this network here is really the circulatory system, right, that feeds the heart of our government technology. So in this process, we've audited nearly 110 miles of fiber and conduit, and over 3,000 assets. As well as doing the auditing, we've trained staff, so we've really got a staff that's excited to do and maintain this on behalf of the government. This is the first time... This is the first time that an optical network will provide government services for the city of Virginia Beach. So as we move forward from the auditing phase, and now we're getting to the implement, we're moving into the operations and management piece of this. So we've, we're leveraging internal skill sets of GIS. We have an extensive GIS skill set within our Department of IT as well as throughout the city. So we're leveraging that and putting it into a computer system. So as you looked and passed around the conduit, we will, in this computer system, not only know the path through the streets of where this resides, but we'll also know what each conduit contains within it. And then when you look into the fiber optic cable, you'll be down to the individual colors of strands. So there's a lot of detail and work to manage this, all the way into the components you saw being delivered out in the trucks. So what this really is, is the modern utility. I say this just about every time I speak, and it needs to be managed as such. Years past, we've managed water and sewer utilities, road networks, but we need to manage the optical network in the same way. So we're also have started a fiber franchise agreement task force. We met once, we meet again on Thursday, and we're going to really treat it as we do with the planning of other utilities. Public works will be involved, public utilities, planning, legal, economic development, and we're going to look as these new franchise agreement requests come for technology services in our right of way, that we can all work together to make sure that they're meeting what standards and policies that we either come up with or that they need to follow, as well as to make sure that, you know, we are working together on a dig-want strategy for future CIPs and construction projects. So now that we have the foundation set, over the next 18 months, we will connect the 60, 59 additional sites through four phases, and I'll slowly go through those so you can get a feel for that. Phase two will be 16 sites. Phase three, 17. Phase four, an additional 15. And ultimately, at the end, we will have a state-of-the-art network that is more secure, resilient, scalable, and it'll produce, and it really, and it'll also contain long-term operational costs, right, because we've invested in our own assets. So we look to have this done over the next 18 months, average about four connections a month. So with, continued with the connectivity or community connectivity thing, now we're talking about connectivity internationally. So with the recent announcements of Microsoft, Facebook, and Telefonica, we wanted to give you an East Coast view of the submarine cables coming into the United States. Here, I've popped out to a site that really shows and gives you a view of the connectivity throughout the world and what we are connected to now. So go ahead and scroll from left to right. So you can just kind of, she continuing to go around the globe here, looking at the subsea cables across the world that we are now going to be connected to, which is really exciting. So go ahead and zoom in a little bit to Virginia Beach. So one thing to note here on the East Coast, and you can see there's a series of cables going in New York and New Jersey and South Florida. As those cables are aging and as real estate pricing, prices are increasing in those areas, right, we had a unique opportunity to become that new East Coast communications hub, and that's what I believe we're becoming today. So not only do we have the announcements of the Moraya, the Microsoft and Facebook, and the Bruza, the Telefonica, we have other parties already interested in Virginia Beach and that have opened up conversations about redirecting their cable from New York and New Jersey as planned into Virginia Beach. Okay? Go back to the presentation, please. So as I mentioned, the first cable is the Moraya. This is the Microsoft and Facebook connection. This is one coming from Spain to Virginia Beach. This is the fastest cable to ever cross the Atlantic, and it's the fastest cable with the lowest latency to ever connect to the United States. So this is very exciting for us. This was mentioned, I believe, in May of this year. Bruza, this was the Telefonica announcement, coming from South America. This was announced in March with their intent to purchase land in May, and we'll talk a little bit about this. So when you look at these paths, you say, well, how do they determine the path to get to Virginia Beach? Well, the first thing they got to do is they got to do planning, engineering, and surveying. So they send out these ships, and they look at the terrain of the ocean. And as they approach Virginia Beach or anywhere along the eastern United States, and in this case, Virginia Beach, they're looking at, you know, geologically activity zones. They're looking at protected areas. They're looking at DoD restricted areas. They're looking at, you know, EPA areas. They're also looking at engineering and permitting that they have to do. So they put a permit application in, and they also work at the federal level, the state level, the Army Corps of Engineers that we heard earlier, working with the road projects. So they, from a private investment perspective, they are going through that permitting process. So as they come into Virginia Beach, they start looking at, okay, so where can we land up and down Virginia Beach's borders? And they immediately started talking about Camp Pendleton. Reason being, these cables come in, they want an inconspicuous location, but they also were attracted by the security of Camp Pendleton being a military base. So what we're looking at here is the potential cable approach that would come in from, you know, the, either Spain or South America into the Camp Pendleton parking lot. This view shows what we're working with a consultant that has experience on what they call the wet side, the ocean side of the house, really wanting to make sure that we maximize the amount of cables that may approach us into the Camp Pendleton site. So what we don't want to happen is them to spread out these initial six, these cables, and it's being built to a capacity of six, so it essentially blocks others from approaching us. So we want to make sure we do our due diligence to make sure we can get as many cables in there over the next, you know, several decades, right, because the life expectancy is 25 to 30 years on these cables coming across the ocean. So here is that parking lot at Camp Pendleton. So again, they would come in from onshore, go underneath the dunes, everything's protected. That's where they get all their permits and, and working with the Corps of Engineers and other federal and state groups, and they would come into manholes. And then from the manholes, they would go across Pendleton, down south and exit at South Bird Neck Road, and make its way on to General Booth. General Booth, where they would travel down to the Corporate Landing Business District, where they plan on having their 20,000, nearly 20,000 square foot data center. So as we were going through this, and we started working with Camp Pendleton, we obviously have a very good partnership and relationship with them. During this process, they asked us to inquire about what it would take to expand utilities, water and sewer utilities throughout Camp Pendleton that align with their master plan. So we had public utilities go out, work with their, their team to estimate what it would cost to extend water and sewer service. And at this point, we have come up with a budgetary number of $1.3 million, and we have provided that to Camp Pendleton for their consideration. So looking at it from the beach manhole, as they come ashore, all the way down to Corporate Landing, this would be the run today. This is what we anticipate. Again, six conduits running through Camp Pendleton, all the way down to Corporate Landing. To date, we've had Telefonica sign an agreement to purchase the land at a price of $210,000 an acre. They, we anticipate, they, it was actually, the city's extended the 100-day due diligence period, so they can finalize the site plan, do, look at the building elevations, make sure that they adhere to the building guidelines of Corporate Landing, and we look to have that completed late October. So they would finalize that purchase late October is what we're looking at. Now, I mentioned the other company who's inquiring, and maybe changing from going into New York, New Jersey, down to us. They're looking at potentially another additional three and a half acres, up to maybe additional 10 acres, and they would also be interested in Corporate Landing Park. So what you see in this industry is, once this starts happening, a lot of these groups like to aggregate around each other. So what we're hoping to do is, you know, expand on that, maybe have Corporate Landing be a corporate technology park. What are our next steps? Well, we're working with the state. We've been working with the Department of Military Affairs, and now we're working with the Deputy Attorney General to finalize the master agreement to allow these groups to come into Camp Pendleton. We are working to understand what these landing fees and transport fees, and what we're seeing is we're looking at when these groups came ashore in Florida, Hermosa Beach, California, up in New York, New Jersey, what were the one-time fees that they paid the cities, as well as the annual fees that they shared with the cities for what we call the transport fees. So we're working to get a better understanding of what that means to us. And from a cable landing and data center side, you're looking for the beach manhole and directional drilling to be completed by May of 2017. The beach manhole is 17 kilometers offshore to be completed at the same timeframe of May, and then the main vessel installation from the 17 kilometers out to the end of U.S. waters to be done by September of 2017. Tentative timelines for the data center, again, the final acquisition of the property late October, with the data center being, construction being complete by April of 2017. Question?
Thank you, Matt, for a great presentation. Have they started on the other side of the water yet?
They have not. They have not. They're really looking to start this way and move from us over there.
They're going to start on this side, then?
Yep, they're going to start on our side of the ocean.
Fantastic. I like that even better. Good job.
I'm pretty, just, just to tell you about the whole team, it's been a really good exercise. We had a very effective meeting with General, Major General Williams, Army National Guard, our Agent in General, and he, this meeting was put together by Bob Mathias and had Delegate Barry Knight there to kind of oversee as the General Assembly does kind of control that. And, and he's very excited. Tom Leahy and Bob Montague coming up with a strategy to, that we had discussed for well over a decade to provide utilities to their training facilities. They are really looking at expanding operations at Pendleton. We really need to support that for that operational contribution that they give to DoD and make it a viable training base. So things are really following in place, and I just want to commend IT Department for stepping up and taking on this major executive leadership here in this initiative. And I think that our master technology plan has really rocketed out the gate over the last three years since we approved that, and this is just another major advancement for us.
That's great. Ben?
I'd just like to thank Matt Orvey for all the work that he's done in bringing this to fruition. You know, the transatlantic cable is something that's very exciting, but what I find most exciting about this presentation is the proliferation of the Next Generation Network. And so, just so that everybody knows, you know, prior to this Next Generation Network, and we're still implementing the Next Generation Network, were we leasing cable, or were we leasing fiber from?
Yes, we were leasing services from Cox Communications.
And did that cost the city any money?
That cost the city a tremendous amount of money.
And so will we be saving money?
When this is implemented, we will be avoiding roughly about $500,000 a year. We built a business case based off of expected baseline of communications that were necessary for a capacity standpoint to these locations, yes.
How long does this fiber typically last?
Usually lasts about 30, 25 to 30 years.
Good.
Very good. Well, Matt, I want to thank you again for doing a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Arena update, Dave Hanson.
Yes, I'm going to pop a single chart. We can find it. Here. Doug's on leave today, and as you know, I'm taking off on vacation tomorrow, get away for a little bit, and Doug will be in charge for half a week, and then on Sunday, Tom takes over, and I'll be back before the start of the Labor Day weekend. Back to work on Friday. The revenue, take you back to where we had our discussion, and we established some parameters so that USM could move forward with a domestic financing strategy that made a lot of sense to virtually everybody here. In fact, I think it was unanimous, everybody kind of agreed that they could pursue that, and that they would obtain a revenue feasibility study, and we're expecting to have probably the preliminary version of that, the draft version, by the end of this week. That is the catalyst document, so that Fitch, the rating agency that's been selected to give them a look at their corporate rating for the bond issue. They create an indicative rating report that was very essential to us to take a look at those two documents, to look at the, the reasonableness of what the interest rates would be, as we are going to be reimbursing them for the costs associated with their bond issues, and we expect to see that potentially the end of next week. If those things occur, we'll be able to establish for your first meeting in September. Remember, this is a five Tuesday month, so you get an off week next week, council, and we would schedule a council briefing. I would say that if the rating comes back as an investment grade, it'll be an open briefing, it'll be straightforward. They will have met all the parameters that you put in place for your, for your acceptance to move forward. I think it'll be a straightforward conversation. We can also schedule a public hearing out front so that the public has an opportunity to interact with you, and then that'll allow our city attorney and Alex Stiles to go ahead and make the modifications to the development agreement, and then we'll set that up for potential approval on the 20th of September. If something happens, may have to talk about it in closed session, we can potentially do that, but I'm getting a really good feeling that potentially, things are going to work out for us. Some things are underway as we are here today, and happy to report that surveying has been, been ongoing and almost concluded. Soil, soil borings are going on within our parking lot area, and the site that will be the center of gravity for the arena project, the arena itself. And then we've had a couple meetings, two meetings that I'm aware of, between planning and public works with the developer in the pre-submental business, because we too have to get our stuff together to work with them, both in the permitting and the inspection process, like we would at any construction, for any building, internal to the private construction of a private facility, as well as the public facilities going on around it. And then, of course, you're aware of the advertisement that they are moving forward with premium seating sales. Andrea is here today, should you have any questions, and just wanted to quickly update you all, because this is a major, major move forward by the council and our private partner.
Very good. Andrea, do you want to add anything?
The only thing I would also like to believe that...
I'm going to have to ask you to go up where you can, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. I usually go up in the aisle voice, so we'll be happy to. The only thing is that, to my understanding, the subdivision plot has been completed as well, so that has been something that we've been working with the city staff as well, and we're pretty excited. I mean, we think this thing is going to happen. We feel very confident about it. I will say, I would hope that we might could even vote September 6th. We're pushing, I know, but I really want to break ground before December 31st, just as a comment.
We look forward to hearing from you. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on. Planning Department Initiatives, Barry.
Well, thank you very much.
Glad to have you here, sir.
Good afternoon. By the way, Nancy McIntyre signed that plot today, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Nancy, glad to have you.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us. We're going to give you just a brief update on some activity in the Planning Department and known as the Department of Planning and Community Development. We're going to talk about who we are, what we do, how we're, and how we're doing it better. Now, Mr. Hanson has been checking in with me on a regular basis on how we are doing it better and what we are doing, so, as well as Mr. Smith. So the most recently, and we briefed him, he thought maybe I had some, some, some good stuff for you here today. Some of who we are here today, we have Nancy McIntyre, who, like I said, signed the plot and every other important plan that we have. Carolyn Smith, who's the acting planning administrator, and Kevin Kemp, who's the acting zoning administrator. So what have we been doing since last July? Well, we had a Department of Service, Feldman Service Center audit by the city auditor. We've implemented many of those changes. You can stay on the, on the first one. Many of those changes. We've had an internal survey of the department, where all the department was surveyed about what we're doing well, what we're not doing. We evaluate, we had human resources evaluate every position in the department. So what did we find out? Well, we found out that, obviously, we can do some things better. Human resources recommended separating the, the current... Human resources recommended separating the, the current planning and zoning administrator into two positions. So, basically what I say is it's going to take two people to, to fill in for Karen Lasley. So, we support that, and we actually will proceed with advertisement for those positions. Merging the comprehensive planning and environmental sustainability and current planning divisions into one division. One of the things I'm going to talk about is how we collaborate. And so, it's hard to collaborate if you have a lot of separate divisions that, that are not necessarily always working together. We identified a lot of, of changes that happened to job descriptions. We have a lot of job descriptions that are, are old, and so we need to, we need to update them, working on that. And then one of the things that came out of the, the audit by HR as well as our own observations is that we need to centralize our human resources and financial management services into one division. We have a lot of people, a lot of divisions doing their own thing, and we need to get them all consolidated and comprehensive into one area. So, what else have we been doing? Every division head, every division head has been tasked with improving efficiency, customer service, and the culture, and they all go together. And so, we have, we've had ongoing efforts amongst ourselves in work groups to do that. A lot of efficiencies have, have come out of that. And so, we are a, becoming a can-do organization, and what I like to say is we approve plans. So, and I make it really hard on everybody, I say, we approve plans. We don't review plans, we approve plans. So, but on the other side, in the last year, we've lost about 12 people. 10 due to retirements, two to resign, resignations, and that is almost 10% of our entire department. So, we are working that back up, and unfortunately, that trend is going to change, is going to continue as those people who are my age are retiring, me and Bob Mathias, so, us older people. So, anyway, so, an unknown perception is that the department, probably 90% of the staff of the 128 people are involved in regulatory efforts. I mean, we'd like to think we're, we're doing watercolors, as Mr. Earn would say, and other nice things, but we are involved in a tremendous amount of enforcement of regulations. We also support four boards and commissions designated by city code, planning commission, board of zoning appeals, wetlands board, and Chesapeake Bay board. And guess how many people are unhappy with decisions on that? Not everybody, but occasionally we have people that are not thrilled with our decisions. So, with that in mind, here's some of the regulations. Now, you can turn the page. Here's just some of the regulations that the department is responsible for enforcing. They are federal, they are state, they are local, they range from flood protection, EPA, Army Corps of Engineers, I'm not going to go through the list. Tremendous amount of, of regulations. Big one for a lot of people is the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development Uniform Statewide Building Code, changes every three years. Sherry Hayner's not here today, but she is the expert on that code, and she is forwarding a rehab code, which is a new code, and I'll probably say it numerous times, but we are available anytime to meet with any developers, builders, whatever, to try to make sure that we can figure out how to make your project work and how to approve your plans. So, who we are, we have what was three divisions, and we are working together as one division now. Comprehensive planning, current planning, environmental, wetlands, waterfront operations, and so we have merged that group into one division. They are working together, they're working collaboratively, they are working on all these efforts on an as-needed basis. That administrator position is currently vacant, but we're going to advertise for that position this week. Zoning enforcement, we've heard a lot about zoning enforcement lately. There are eight office staff, eight inspectors. We have eight inspectors for the entire city. And so, we do, we do the board of zoning appeals. An interesting statistic is that we basically, the zoning group, eight people do five, over 5,000 inspections a year and pick up over 6,000 signs a year. We had an interesting text, one more, I had an interesting text one morning from a citizen who was concerned about a city truck taking up signs on a median. And what were we doing out there on a Saturday? And it's, it was a wonderful text to get because we were actually out there working on a Saturday, and from morning to that person quit that day, they picked up 137 signs. So, if you, if you wonder why the roads are looking good and why there's not a lot of, a lot of extra signs out there, it's because staff is out there daily picking them up. That position, administrator position, is also vacant, and we are advertising for that this week. Development Services Center, one of the larger divisions, 25 FTEs. Just to give you some stats, 607 plans and as-built, 145 permits for land disturbance, sureties, $37 million insurances and bonds, and subdivision plats, and which you've heard about, one of them was approved for the arena today. Lots of stuff. Total submittals, 1,278. We started electronic submittals in October. That has worked out better than I had imagined. There was a lot of, of concern from, from our customers as well as from staff, but it's really working out very well, and we're very pleased with it. Permits inspections has 50 staff total, monitor 1,805 active sites. The value of construction in the last six months is $371 million. I'm checking to see if you read our presentation, we had $3 billion in our staff, in our report to you, so it wasn't 3 billion, but it was 371 million. Nobody caught that, huh? All right. I didn't have to say anything. Fees are 2.5 million collected, and that division also reviews every building plan that comes in, every, every single-family building, every commercial building for all the codes and all the requirements. Some interesting stats on that group, in the last six months, basically they've issued about 16,000 permits. The one that gets me is the total number of inspections. Approaches 9,000 inspections a month. Those inspections are done typically within 24 hours, if you call in before 7 o'clock in the morning. 60% of our permits are approved online and paid for with a credit card or some other means. You've read the other cities, Chesapeake, Norfolk have these great new systems. We've been doing this for a while. We just, one of the things Mr. Hanson said, you need to tell everybody you're doing this. So, we're telling you, and we've been doing, long before these other cities have been doing it, and our rates are comparable or lower than those other cities. This year, the strategic growth area office was merged into the planning department, dealing with parking systems, transportation planning, economic fiscal analysis, SGA implementation, and urban design. I really see the SGA office as the group that's going to look for the future planning of the whole city and ultimately will move away from just strategic growth area planning. Director's office, basically support the computer systems, financial management oversight, website, street addresses, and, and all the HR issues. All right, so how are we doing it better? What are we doing? These are our mantras, our goals, our, our major issues. We're looking for efficiency, how can we improve service? We're looking for collaboration with our customers and between our own staff and departments of agencies. Believe it or not, we have to work with public utilities, we have to work with public works, we have to work with fire, we have a lot of departments we work with, and we do our best, and we are, we are, we have made some progress as far as how we have those relationships. The culture, so I've told everybody that, I'm sorry, mistransparency. We want to be transparent, and we are transparent to our customers as well as to our own staff. Some of our staff, we're not aware of budget issues, we're not aware of reality, so we've made sure that that, that information is all available. Our culture is the other most important issue is improving customer service. Staff is always available to assist. I don't know if somebody's afraid to call. I usually do answer my phone and do return my calls, so, and people don't seem to mind calling me, but anybody you want to call, we will be glad to sit down with you at any time. These are not cookie cutter projects, those are not always easy to solve, and we are there and available to try to make things work for you. So, how are we doing it better? Customer service training, all staff has been, been trained in customer service and EEO training. We continually have more customer service training. One of the, one of the big items that's come up is the pre-submital meetings every Thursday for developers and consultants. Nancy heads that up.
I'm hearing some good things about that.
If you have a project, if you have something you want to build, if you have an idea, you come in and we'll tell you. One of the best things we can do is explain to you why you shouldn't spend your money trying to do this as well as why you should. So, sometimes there's a, a lot of learning to do. So, we have new checklists for single-family, we'll have checklists developed for every type of project, where we redesign the webpage, and we're reorganizing the DSC as well as many other divisions through the department. In DSC, we were behind in our plan review, and we were behind in permits inspections. We are completely caught up in permits inspections, and we have made great progress in, in DSC. And so, we have gone from 30 or 40 per project manager behind to five or six are on schedule. So, we have made tremendous progress. We have, thanks to your help, we are looking forward to office renovations. There's a rendering of the concept, basically completely improved the appearance, the entrance of the hallway, provide better customer service reception for all three floors in the building, open up the walls, make sure that, that the, the counter is available to anyone and open. We are filling vacancies as fast as we can, and we are following through with the planning evaluation liaison positions, which you know is the ombudsman position, and we're meeting with the process improvement team next week to discuss some of the ideas on how to proceed with that. You also approved two mechanical inspectors new. We advertised for those positions immediately, the first round, we did not have appropriate qualified persons. We are out again advertising, it looks like we are going to have some good candidates to fill those positions to make sure we can inspect all those air conditioners and heaters and, and cooling equipment. That's it. I just wanted to update you, I think we're, we're really making some good progress, we've got some great staff. I want to make sure you know that you can call us, contact us anytime you'd like, and we'll be glad to try to make your projects or your customers or your constituents enjoy the experience in Virginia Beach.
Great. Barry, thanks for your presentation. Got two comments already. Jim Wood, then Bobby Dyer.
Thanks. Barry, you mentioned, I got the same comment from that same citizen regarding the illegal signs, and I guess his was some of the...
I didn't point that out, did I?
But, but that brings up a point. So, do we now have zoning inspectors working nights and weekends?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Not, not nights, but we have, we typically in the summer season assign a weekend inspector. We don't do it all year long depending on the workload, but right now we have somebody on the weekends.
That's something that I'd like to see looked at more in depth because I get a number of calls throughout the year, not just in the summertime.
Right, right.
From people in different communities that are upset because they know that their neighbors know that inspectors aren't out on the weekends, so they'll do all their nefarious things on the weekend. The other, other issue, we talked about the turnaround time for, for the permits and that sort of thing, and, and I'm anxious to see how the process improvement stuff is, is implemented. I, I shared with, with Doug Smith a series of three engineers, and I gave him the names and phone numbers of all three of them regarding a specific project that they said, well, if it's in Virginia Beach, it's 4,000, if it's in another city, it's 900. So, that, that's a concern to me, and I, hopefully that'll get addressed with all this. The final thing is Acela, and I talked to Matt Orvey just before you came in here. The Acela system, you know, the permits office requires you to use it to, to get your inspections. However, it does not work on anything except for Microsoft Internet Explorer, so it does not work on my iPhone in the field, it doesn't work on an Android in the field, it only works on that. And if, like me, I don't use Microsoft Explorer because of all the spyware that is inherent in it, so it doesn't work on Google Chrome or any of the others. Now, Matt's aware of it, and there's some other issues, but I'd, I'd like to think that, that perhaps you can talk to your staff to, to have a workaround for people that have to leave the field to go somewhere to find a Microsoft computer in order to, to work at when they should be able to frankly use any, any smartphone, so.
All right.
Those are my three topics. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Bobby D.
Thank you. And Barry, I wanted to thank you, the manager and Doug, you know, for all, you know, collaborating. The process improvement task force did a special study on this, and it is invaluable that we have Bob Scott, former planner, we have Brad Martin, we had Tuck Bowie, who's also, you know, knows something about construction and everything. And we came up with an analysis and made some recommendations I think were implemented and reflected in there. And I think it's important, though, that, you know, I can't tell you how much I appreciated the steps that you've, you know, taken going forward, but I think the important thing, and I think Jim may kind of hit on it a little bit, is to change your corporate culture because one of the things, and like, I applaud the planning Nancy and everybody for trying to do what they do. And the one thing Bob Scott pointed out, that the ci, the city has the responsibility to make sure that codes are enforced in a way. But the other thing is too, that we have to be, for better term, more user-friendly in the way that we approach people going forward. Because right now, the perceptions in some corners is that it's more of an adversarial approach, especially with getting, you know, things planned. And a lot of times, how many times is we, council members, get calls from people saying they're running into, you know, barriers and roadblocks trying to get things done. Regretfully, last year I had a business open, and on opening day, it was shut down. The city put a close down on it, and 50 people were left outside wondering what's going on. And they ran into some problems that when the inspectors gave them additional stuff to do the following week, the bottom line is, I'm not going to get into details, but the business is no longer in business. They had a bad start. And I think that if we become more ambassadors, you know, when people go in, in the beginning and say, what can we do to get you open, not necessarily what we can do to keep throwing things up, you know, as barriers as we go along. And I think you're making strides in that direction. And once again, changing a corporate culture is one of the toughest things you can do in an organization in terms of trying to get it, and I applaud your efforts. But the thing is that if upfront, people know exactly what they do with a checkoff list instead of an ongoing, okay, now that you got this done, we need you to do this. And the other thing, and one of the things we also recommend with satisfaction surveys, it's a good way, indication of the level of customer service that you're providing. And I'm just making suggestions, I know council members don't get involved in the minutia on how to run things, but that being said, you know, if we can change that, and, you know, manager and I talked about the can-do organization and that we get right, and one of the things process also did was look at some of the barriers to business startup and expansion. The point is that, that we can iron out a lot of product and get the plans approved on a more expedient basis, and we can also be more user-friendly with the permits and inspections. We will get that reputation of being the most built business welcoming city in the Commonwealth, and I think that's what we all want to do. But I thank you for your efforts today.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Barbara Hiddlin.
There has been a lot of change in, in how you're doing things and so forth. Is it possible for us to get a list of the names of the people who are in each of these divisions so we can, you know, I don't know.
Absolutely.
I know people, and it's much easier if I can tell who is working where.
That's very easy. We'll be glad to get that to you.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Abilia?
Just going to ask where you mentioned inspectors, you have eight or five zoning something?
Eight zoning.
Eight zoning.
But there's 31 inspectors for everything from civil inspections to buildings, electrical, mechanical, those kind of things.
That's adequate. I mean, it's getting what you need there.
You know, I, I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job on the building permits, and, and it is hard to keep people, but, but we, overall, we've been doing pretty well. The zoning, I think, is, is, we don't actively enforce zoning, I'll go so far to say that. What we do is respond to calls because you can imagine seven people are not driving around enforcing the entire city. So, if you expect a, a more aggressive zoning enforcement, you probably do need some more people.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I've, I've got two things. First one is size of department compared to pre-recession. Are we, the numbers?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's grown at all.
Y'all took a hit during the recession.
Well, I would say we are still below pre-recession numbers. We've only added four staff.
That might be something worth noting. I know that there wasn't as much demand perhaps, but some other regulations had been pushed on.
That's a good, that's, well, no, I'm sorry, that's not exactly right because you, you did, you got a significant increase with stormwater. I'll have to get that to you.
Yeah, but it's no big deal, but I think you should be noted, this is one of the departments that, you know, we did cut, you know, and people I don't think lost their jobs, but we've certainly cut positions, as I recall. Secondly, you know, sometimes things are not very easy, and y'all... Secondly, you know, sometimes things are not very easy and y'all going through a time where things are not very easy. And I want to speak on behalf of the council and tell you that we got great faith in you and the planning department and that we're gonna, you know, things are on the right track here and look forward to a real bright future. This planning department has had a great track record over the years. You know, I mean, I've had, I've had ups and downs with the planning department if, over the years, if you really think about it, but it's had some great, great times and I know those great times are ahead of us again and we wish you all the very best. Okay?
Very much. Appreciate your support.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to online home sharing economy ad hoc committee and this is Dave Hanson.
I'm actually gonna let Robert Mathias step up.
You're okay with that now?
He's my executive lead and, you know, he's sitting on both the general assemblies committee and he's working hand in glove to, with our new chairman and he's going to give you an update because you went from a committee of eleven to a committee of fourteen and he needs to tell you about that.
Yeah, it's kind of what we said we would do.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I see Mr. Kellums here, so Phil, you're certainly welcome to chime in. You appointed a committee last week. You appointed eleven members last week, including Mr. Drescher, the chairman, and we have moved out pretty aggressively. You also, it's our understanding, you're going to appoint some additional folks at your first meeting in September. And Mr. Duffin, Ira and Mr. Mullen. Mr. Mullen is basically the registered lobbyist for Airbnb in Virginia. I actually have a meeting with him Thursday morning, nine o'clock in Richmond. Our lobbying team, Angie and Julia, are going to meet with him to talk about the, this committee and so, we're going to move out aggressively on that issue. We've set the, we've set all three meetings. We're trying to do a very aggressive and rapid process. The first meeting will be September seventh. The city attorney will be making a presentation for you. We've already provided the appointed members and the soon to be appointed members with a primer on FOIA. I'll basically give them the presentation, the council's seen. Mr. Kellum will be giving his presentation and the city attorney and the zoning administrator will be helping on existing zoning laws. And we'll, Phil will also be talking about the ordinance that y'all approved last week. The first, second meeting, September fourteenth, this is going to be an opportunity to get comment from the public. We're going to be working a very aggressive public information program over all the venues. We have the web, BB Gov, et cetera, and I know Julie and her staff are going to do a great job helping on that and so, we'll, we'll get these done. And then the third meeting, September twenty-eighth, hopefully this time, we'll be well informed, have a sense of the public's reaction and try to propose a recommendation to city council for y'all to send to the work group of the housing study commission, which is actually meeting this Thursday and we'll probably get you something on Friday in your Friday package about what they talk about. So, this is an aggressive schedule, but I think it's doable. Mr. Drescher is going to make himself available and we're going to hopefully get a lot of work done, get a lot of public comment and provide you all with some excellent recommendations by the end of next month.
Great, Barbara.
Yes, just since I got my forum this week, I want to make sure I'm telling people the right thing. What will people be commenting on at that third meeting? I mean.
Well, the, the second meeting, we're going to ask for public comment. Basically, I'm, yes ma'am, I'm sorry. Well, what is their perception of the home sharing economy? What do they see the problems? What do they see the benefits? I, I know we have at least one person on the ad hoc committee that's in the business, as it were, of a home sharing. So, we'll have, I think, a wide ranging look at how people perceive the home sharing economy and how it impacts a citizen of Virginia Beach. We'll be, you know, trying to get comments on zoning, on quiet enjoyment that, you know, you zoned in on last week. So, I, I think a lot of issues like that. I know there's some overlap, at least from my perception, with the event homes and there's certainly a lot of information out there about event homes and a lot of people are very well informed of that because of the four, I think, public hearings that the study group had on event homes. So, I think there's been a lot of information out there already and hopefully people will probably already have their minds made up on this.
Do you don't have any, any particular format or proposal that people would be commenting on whether or not they agree with what you're proposing because there's nothing proposed at this time? Is that right?
Exactly. What we have from your legislative package from last year, well, actually last session that you all adopted, I believe in January, and we're certainly going to publicize that. And basically, we also presented it, or I presented in the presentation a couple of weeks ago, that we want to have folks be required to register. We want them to collect the taxes that are due. We want to have some control, y'all want to have some control over the intensity of these uses, such as parking and things like that. Want to work with the industry so that they sanction business folks who don't comply with the local ordinances. And again, this is a statewide issue, so we're going to be looking for a statewide solution, especially since we're a Dillon rural state.
So, do you anticipate at the third meeting, these fourteen people are going to sit around a table and they're going to compose this proposed ordinance?
It will not be a proposed ordinance, no ma'am. We're going to be proposing some basically factors we would like for the general assembly, the housing study committee, commission, excuse me, the ad hoc or the work group of the housing study commission to propose to the general assembly. You know, they're supposed to finish their work by December. I think they're going to finish in October. That's why we're compressing this timeline so stringently in order to provide some good comment in addition to what we've already been providing to the work group of the housing study committee.
So, they're, they're just, they are going to be suggesting what we should send to the state?
Yes, ma'am.
At what point will the public be able to make a comment on what we're suggesting to the state as to whether or not they agree with what we're suggesting to the state?
Well, my thought is, it will come back to y'all, to the city council for review and I suspect that sometime in October, y'all will try to get public comment on, on that it, those recommendations. You made the point last week that this should be a city council recommendation, so I think it's probably appropriate for y'all to also receive public comment once you get the recommendation back from this group.
John, Paul.
I wouldn't have any issue with when we're getting it on Friday, posting what we're receiving on the city's webpage and put it out there as a focal point.
Don't bother me.
We, we will be doing that, yes sir.
Okay, that, well, I just want to pick the public's hearing so they'll know that when we're getting it, they're getting it because that will allow them to be seeing it and I'm, they're not bashful.
We're going to be posting all the historical information. You have Phil's presentation, my presentation, the legislation that was proposed the last session. So, I think this week, there'll probably be a big data dump on, we don't call them hot topics, I don't believe anymore.
That's your commissioner representative.
I'm referring specifically to whatever they come up with.
Yes.
Will be posted on that Friday.
Yeah, yes sir. Yes, sir.
That was appropriate. Barbara.
I was just reading this again, though. You said at this third meeting, we would propose a recommendation to city council to pursue through existing zoning ordinances and also provide recommendation to the housing study commission. So, I was looking at it.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have to, and I'm going to have to defer to the zoning administrator and the city attorney as to whether we have any leeway within the existing zoning ordinance. I think we also have to be, I want to phrase this correctly, I, I think we have to be aware that this is a statewide issue and if we can't do sort of the convoy theory of, of legislation, we can't be much more stringent than what the general assembly is going to have a stomach with.
Yes, sir.
We just need to get our input in as a council before the general assembly starts making decisions.
I totally agree.
Yeah, there are, you know, we, we found out that last year, the Airbnb folks were out talking to the delegation during the summer to the general assembly. I don't think our delegation that much, but certainly to the general assembly and so, they came into the general assembly with the delegation, excuse me, the general assembly pretty much primed to be on their side. And because we did such, I think, good job during the session, helped by our delegation, certainly and Senator Norman from the peninsula, we slowed their march to victory and put them basically on the defensive. And I want to keep them on the defensive and come up with a, a good strategy for the city and local governments to go forward. It's, it's, we're not going to be able, nor I think this council want to stop this new economy, but we, y'all certainly need to have some control over it so it's done in an efficient and effective manner.
Very good. Other questions?
I was just saying, looking at this timeline again, and so, the council has time to weigh in, I mean, if, if the general assembly committee is going to be doing something in October, but the second meeting is September fourteenth, but then they're not meeting again until the twenty-eighth, that's two weeks. I mean, if they only had a one week lag and did their thing, then it would be more, it would come back to the council earlier. Just my thought. I'm just concerned that we're not going to have time to.
Just express to the chairman, we're concerned about the timeframe.
I actually, we would have started a week sooner, but we've got, we need to wait for y'all's first council meeting in September and also, the chairman has a vacation planned in that second, third week of September. Key item previous was planned, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Now, we got Carolyn Smith and Kevin Kemp from planning to give us the planning items that are pending and I'm sure they're all easy, right?
I think so.
Oh, good.
We try and make your job as easy as possible, leave it or not.
And we certainly do. Thank you for that.
Except for the beach district item. We have nineteen items for you in September and I will very quickly go over the September sixth items where you have nine and then Kevin will go over the September twentieth items and there are tens planned for that. We're going to cover all the bases from rezonings to subdivision variances as well as conditional use permits that are going to run the gamut from a craft brewery to a tattoo parlor and a specialty shop. Oh, were you waiting on me? Are you flipping? Okay. So, your first item for September sixth is a subdivision variance for a sixteen unit condominium that's at the corner of Twenty-first Street and Baltic Avenue. The request is to subdivide the site into sixteen individual lots. All of the lots will meet the minimum lot area and lot width requirements under the Form Base Code. However, three of the lots will not have frontage on a standard street. These lots are shown in red, the three lots there. They will front on a twenty-foot wide alley as opposed to the required twenty-four foot street. So, based on that, these three lots do require a subdivision variance. This request will really bring these lots into conformance with current Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae guidelines for permanent mortgages. No changes are proposed to access the number of units or to the parking arrangement on the site. Item two is a request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor inside the applicant's existing beauty salon off of Virginia Beach Boulevard. The applicant proposes to offer permanent makeup solutions particularly to clients who have difficulty applying makeup due to cancer and neurological disorders. All tattooing will be done by appointment and it is her policy not to apply tattoos on anyone under the age of eighteen regardless of any parental authorization. Turning Point Church received a conditional use permit in nineteen ninety-six and in two thousand and eight, they were granted a modification to place a portable unit on the site for three years. They got an extension of another five years that was granted in two thousand and eleven and as has been the case with many churches throughout Virginia Beach and perhaps throughout the country, during the economic downturn, their fundraising expectations have fallen short. So, they will be before you in September to request a ten-year extension. Staff and the planning commission as well have recommended conditions that will address some minor maintenance issues that we discovered while we were out in the field. And also, we are using this as an opportunity to bring the site more in compliance with some of our landscaping requirements. Kendall K LLC proposes to construct a thirteen unit, single-family development on an almost seven acre site. These residents will become members of the Highland Parish Homeowners Association and vehicular access will be provided off of Salem Road. Twelve of the thirteen proposed lots do meet all of the zoning requirements. However, the proposed lot ten, which is shown in yellow on the screen, is proposed with a twenty-two foot wide lot width rather than the one hundred foot that is required by the R fifteen district and that will necessitate a subdivision variance. A land swap is proposed between the applicant and the homeowners association. So, the area in pink that is controlled by the applicant will be conveyed to the homeowners association and it will be combined with the area in purple and that will create a very nice and much larger open space for the Highland Parish community. The triangle in green will be conveyed to the applicant and ultimately become part of lot eleven. And then the flag portion of lot ten, which is shown in yellow, will also be conveyed to the applicant and that will be the lot ten's access to the public street and that's where you have the flag lot, which necessitates the subdivision variance. Item number five is a request to rezone two parcels along Ocean View Avenue that were plotted in the very early nineteen hundreds. The site has been zoned B one neighborhood district for many, many years and the majority of lots in this vicinity have been developed with residential uses. While not required parking for the restaurant that is located nearby at the corner of Fentress and Ocean View Avenue, these parcels have been used over the years for parking for that restaurant. The existing internal property line will be vacated in order to create one five thousand square foot lot. And while under the, the proposed zoning, a duplex could be constructed on the site, the proffer agreement does limit development on this property to just one single family dwelling. There was some opposition at the planning commission hearing and that opposition was related to their fear of the loss of these two units for parking spaces as well as traffic issues that they experienced throughout the neighborhood. Item six is a request to rezone several R ten parcels within the Sea-Tac community. The request is to construct a one-story self, one-story self-storage facility on property that would be rezoned to conditional I one light industrial use. This site is within the greater than seventy-five noise zone, which is the highest noise zone, and it is also located in accident potential zone two. Residential uses are incompatible with Article eighteen of the zoning ordinance. Staff did recommend approval. Planning commission voted six to five to deny and yesterday, staff received a letter from the applicant requesting an indefinite deferral. So, as this project has been advertised, you will be required to entertain the deferral for that project.
Can I ask a question on that?
Certainly.
I was told that, some members on the planning commission said that residential was permitted by right or am I wrong?
Correct. Could you go back to the zoning map there? Thank you. So, it's an accident potential zone two.
Correct.
And in that area, residential, if it's currently zoned residential, you do have the ability to construct.
That's correct.
Homes. That's true. However, if this was accident potential zone one and there were no houses on the site, we would not issue permits for new dwellings.
Yep, but, but that's not the case, correct?
It's residential. It's residential now? That's not the case here, correct?
Okay.
It's accident potential zone two. So, if the zoning is in place, then yes, they can build houses on that property.
Okay.
Did, did that answer your question?
That's what I, I was right. Yes, sir.
Do you know, Carolyn, if, if it was rezoned and was taken away from residential zoning, would that give us the Oceana credit for reducing encroachment?
Certainly. Anytime you're removing an incompatible zoning.
How many units would that, the three, I guess?
There's three lots there.
Three building lots?
Yes. The applicant's engineer has provided a layout that shows up to nine, I believe, single-family units if they were to combine it with the, these residential properties here as well.
I could just thought, but correct, given the current, it is two, they do have a vested right for residential development on those parcels?
Yes, they do.
That's important.
Thank you.
Deferred from your August sixteenth agenda is this request, as the proffers were not legally sufficient, the applicant requests a. The applicant requests a change of zoning from O-2 office district to conditional B-2 community business district. This proposal will consolidate three vacant parcels along South Independence Boulevard, and a two-story commercial center will be constructed. The submitted layout plan depicts a restaurant, almost 4,000 square feet of retail space, as well as second-story office space. The applicant, neighborhood representative staff, and Councilwoman Ross Hammond met on the site to discuss the proposal. And as a result of that meeting, there is a single ingress egress point along South Independence Boulevard, and that was the desire of our traffic engineering staff. The required buffer along the western property line is also depicted on the plan, which is along the southern portion of that slide. And that is required, and it will provide some screening from those residential dwellings to the west. Item number eight is a request for a conditional use permit for a craft brewery. The Young Veterans Brewing Company has operated on this site since 2013. In 2014, the zoning ordinance was amended to add craft breweries as a conditional use within the I-1 light industrial district. As the operator would like to now expand the brewery to up to 6,000 square feet, a conditional use permit is now required. The expansion will include a 750-square-foot tasting room, a large cooler, some office and storage space, and a larger manufacturing area. No changes are proposed to the exterior of the building or to the parking or the site layout overall. And your last item on your September 6th agenda is a request for a conditional use permit for a specialty shop on property that is zoned B1 neighborhood business district and is located in the historic Princess Anne District and within the Princess Anne Commons. This 1,600-square-foot unit will house a small business that specializes in custom finishes on furniture, as well as repurposing of old pieces of furniture. The applicant will hold workshops monthly, and no exterior alterations are proposed to the building or to the overall layout of the site. And I will pass the baton to Kevin, and he will talk to you about your items for September 20th.
Thank you, Carolyn. Kevin, we welcome you.
Thank you. Good evening. So we have 10 items on the September 20th agenda. All 10 were recommended for approval by staff and planning commission. First item is a conditional use permit for home occupation. The applicant wants to run an internet sales establishment out of their home. No retail will be from the home. Why they need a use permit is they want to store their inventory in a detached structure. So use permit is required. No changes to the exterior. Staff planning commission recommended approval. The second item is a street closure, and this is kind of an odd street closure. Next slide shows it real well. There's two small portions of right-of-way that the applicant, who owns the mobile park home, would like to close. What sparked this is just cleaning up title issues. There is no plan to redevelop the site at the moment, but the viewers met, the city has no interest in these portions of right-of-way. You will notice that one is labeled a 20-foot private road. Usually, we wouldn't close a private road. After discussions with city attorney, we weren't sure of the city's interest in that, so we decided to close it, just to have everything cleaned up. Next item, actually, the next three items are for Walmarts. These are for bulk storage yards. What Walmarts are doing now is putting storage containers, you know, big Conex box storage containers in the rear of their stores. And this is to store seasonal merchandise, really from September to the new year. And there are three different sites. The first is on Nemo Road. But Red Mill, they want 20 storage containers. They'll be placed behind the store. This went to planning commission, and there was a lot of discussion based on, well, if your business model requires you to have storage containers, is that the best business model? And the store managers were there, and they kind of explained that every year, they're getting approved for less storage containers, and they're moving to a more efficient, but it will be a few years. As a result, planning commission recommended a two-year timeframe on each of these approvals. Second Walmart is one Lynn Haven Parkway up the street here, and those will be stored behind the store, significant buffer. And the third is the one on Phoenix Drive over by Lynn Haven Mall. And this request was only for 10 storage containers. Let's see, I'm getting way ahead of myself here. Gen item number six, VH Vineland. This is a rezoning of three parcels. The applicant plans to combine three parcels. Right now, on the site, there are 12 older apartment units in several buildings. The applicant plans to rezone the parcels and develop it with 11 single-family lots. This came through council before. There was concern because the original proposal, it was all one, and it had a private street. This one has come back. It's now a public right-of-way with 11 lots. Here's an example of what the house is. Next item, Pembroke Square Associates.
Hold on, please.
Is that the one that there is some concern by, in neighborhood next to it, that there's some disputed territory as to...
I wouldn't call it disputed territory. We did have concern at the planning commission hearing. The concern was centered around these trees right here.
Okay.
You know, of course, the owner of the condominium wanted to retain as many trees as possible, and there was discussion as to where exactly that property line is, as to the applicant when they clear the site, not clearing any of the existing mature trees on the neighboring property. The applicant is saying they will go out there, make sure, and clearly mark that line, but that was what the opposition was centered around.
Well, I would like for, I would like to know what the property line is when we, when we do our action, so we know what we're approving. So if we can...
Oh, absolutely.
...get them to establish the property line before it comes to us.
Right, and what we can do is we can get that figured out and give you a graphic that shows exactly where that property line and, you know, which trees are on which property.
I think it's important that we know what we're doing and not that it's still hanging out there.
Absolutely. All right. Item seven, Pembroke Square Associates. This is a modification. This is for the Uptown Alley Bowling Alley, which is going into Pembroke Mall. You previously approved a use permit for recreation. With that use permit, the elevation on the right there was approved. They've now come back and want to slightly change that. The new elevation, as shown here, has this circular element at the entrance. It's basically, it's 3,600 square feet added restaurant space. And so they're asking for that change. There's a slight change, I think about 60 square feet in the total area of the space.
Great.
But they're requesting a modification for that. Next item, item eight, is a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales. This is up off Haygood Road. It used to be a 7-Eleven. It is now being repurposed for automobile sales and repair. Applicant is making significant improvements to the site, including landscaping along the right-of-way. They're tearing down that chain link fence and replacing it with a privacy fence. New signage, minor changes to the building, including putting an overhead door for auto repair. City, and big success for us was that they're also removing the ugly, non-conforming sign at the corner.
So the city, all their concerns have been addressed.
I think the applicant has done a wonderful job. He's met with them and has gone above and beyond and...
Thank you very much.
Yep. Ninth item, Shore Ventures. This is a subdivision variance. It's very minor. The lots showing there are 7.5. The applicant wishes to divide it into two lots. Lot 5B there showing is 2.89 feet short of the required lot frontage. So a subdivision variance is required. Staff recommended approval, feels it is consistent with the neighborhood.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Who's that house?
That house? That is a good, good question.
Please, I ask, is that, it looks like it's one of the old barracks houses from Camp Ashby?
It is.
It is? Looks like it's been added on to one of the looks. Okay. Look at that narrow chimney.
We provide you a nice history of that.
Thank you.
All right. And the last item is an ordinance amendment. This just amends, aligns the site plan ordinance with the floodplain ordinance, particularly in what is permitted in the two-feet freeboard. You know, garages, storage space, entryways. So it aligns those ordinance, so they're consistent, and that is what we have for September 20th.
Barbara?
Not about this, but several weeks ago, we had an issue that there had been, dealing with this approval that we wanted to have more than one kitchen in a, in a unit. That, there was one element of the ordinances that was not covered, and what we had before us was to bring that into conformance, but we deferred, delayed that until we had some update on just what was happening with this ability to have more than one kitchen. That hasn't impacted us, has it?
No, it hasn't.
Okay, all right. When do you anticipate that it will?
I can't give you a firm date, but I'm happy to go and expedite that and try to...
Well, I just wondered what your research was showing and if you...
Right.
...were working on it.
And we are working. I'm working with permits and inspections, trying to gather that information.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, folks, I will go ahead and thank everyone for their attendance. Everyone have a great day, and I won't see you next Tuesday.
No, no, it's for you.